All right. Okay, please.
There it goes.
Here.
Great. Massive. You're there.
Here.
Here. Here. It's a matter of that. Here.
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Barnacle News and Current News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fifth, twenty twenty four. Please stand for like.
Would you say? And you did it publicly. Thanks. What is it? Anyways, well.
Welcome to the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person from the council chambers in Borough Hall and being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to be in the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during a open session and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which can be monitored and informed by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, then remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of the three minutes of allotted time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state your name and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body of the audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and default participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. There'll be a test on that later. All right, um, first item on the agenda, which we are very proud of, I will turn it over to our chief to uh let us know what the good news.
So uh tonight I have Mr. Harry Delgado, the State Chiefs Association, to go and talk to you next about accreditation, um, something we achieved after a lengthy three-year process. Thankfully, with the support of the council, and I think Al would remember me coming and begging for money and saying, I need your support for this because I thought it was important. When I became chief in twenty twenty two, um, we had a really nice set of standards. They were good and a lot of them were really good. I didn't want good, I wanted great. And I figured the way to get greatness was to uh implement accreditation topics and develop the set of standards and be a real officer. So we had a clear set of policies and procedures to follow. So without further ado, um, I'll bring up Mr. Delgado to make his presentation. And I just want to make one last little statement, um, to counsel, but I don't get a chance. Jeff is our accreditation manager, Lieutenant Millet. He did a fantastic job. Doug Seals, who was our records clerk who has since retired, a former police officer, he did a great job of helping out too, but it's a whole department effort, um, but in big part to Jeff and I think.
Stand on the X. Can we move the podium over to the X?
So the X.
The X is here. Which is.
Could I move it?
Yes.
How do you all do this? This is constantly. So. Have a goal. The.
People that are working on one thing as well.
This is good.
We want everyone to see you.
Thank you. Good morning. Um. I appreciate the introduction. Harry Delgado, the State Chief of Creation. I did very well with Grand Asian Brother. And I just come here to tell you, Bernard, what the chief just said, that you explained your work well. Um, but uh in seriousness, accreditation, um, just to add some context, what I'm about to say, uh, the uh, out of all the agencies in St. Louis, there's only six hundred that would be eligible to participate in this program. Only about fifty-four percent have actually made it successfully at least once. That is because it's a very rigorous process. So the Police Department today, uh, last uh after hearing, uh, became actually accredited and became part of that elite group of law enforcement agencies that have achieved accreditation. So we're involved for two minutes. I'd like to share with you more detail, basically, what the practice is about. The Burnsville Police Department has made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level. And I have a regard to statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program, that Ministry of Public Insurance and State Association gives the police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission are self-to-transparently demonstrate the professionalism, transparency, and preparedness of paid law enforcement agencies in the state's public safety system. Now, the additionally challenging challenges you just mentioned before and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies, this is potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment in a common resource. Now, accreditation status represents a significant professional achievement, not just for your political background, but every officer that was involved in this process, every officer that worked, of your department. This prestigious accredited status demonstrates Chief John Reckel, the man's full commitment to state and national standards and makes it into the expectation for quality, professional, and ethical policing of the Burnsville Police Department. Now, accreditation provides an objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently, make community needs. And as I mentioned before, possessing accredited agencies can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for the professionalism and the answer to the highest standard. Just at the end of that process, which you mentioned, two years, that rigorous process, there's an actual upside in personal settlement that is made, but we actually look to make sure that this only for simple plan, over a hundred and twelve teners, if they're in the jury, they imagine that this sort of four hundred and eighty items of compliance, proofs of compliance. So out of that, we probably just paraphrase and quote. On the deep jump, Remian, high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism is everything in the agency. Or the future issues deal with the influence of social media on new behavior, officer recruitment and detention, operating radio equipment, resources for staffing, equipment, training, or changing demographics of the Burnsville Police Department. Two things, and Burnsville, the Burnsville Police Department will continue to work forward to the commitment to following best practices, as we burn it planned and a verification of excellent. So it is the opinion of the assessment team. Certainly, I concur that the Burnsville Police Department is highly professional, an accredited agency, which exemplified all of the tenants of law enforcement agencies at the state and national level. So indeed, it's my honor to give tonight, when we have the New Jersey State Association, to support it and uh to congratulate you, John Reckel, accreditation manager Lieutenant Jerry Millet, the members of the Burnsville Police Department, the mayor of the council, and those citizens that base your brothers or or having achieved their accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies in St. Louis, that I make this commitment to our citizens. So it's all deep in our places.
Yeah. 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 Um, our next presentation, um, for those of you that may know, in September, um, Main Street, Burnsville, and the Somerset Rotary got together and went on Taste of Our Town, which for a first-time attempt, I think it was a a great success. Some of me were there.
Big winner?
Big winner. The goal of that was to raise money for the fire company, which um way back before COVID, uh, the chamber used to do, but since that hasn't happened anymore, um, these two groups took it upon themselves to step up and help our fire department. So I thought I saw Harrison, but he was. And so, um, you and Marlon, who Marlon is the president. Main Street and John, you want to come up? Uh, Doug is the president of the Rotary. Don't need another picture. And Harrison is the president of the fire company. So. And yeah, the fact that, for those that don't know, or that everybody here does, that our fire department handling the short duration are all homophones. So they do this amazing job just because they're passionate about what they do and the amount of time. Training alone is amazing. What the amount of time they put in. So we are in. The amount here is six thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. On the board of Main Street and the chairman of Roward, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. Three, one. All right.
Uh.
Thank you very much.
Ted Harb, that. Thank you to. Yeah. Yeah.
We will be able to outfit one firefighter with park pants, coat, helmet, and air hat to go into our state building with this monumental. So thank you very much. Thank. Yeah, man, you're doing great, man. Thank you very much.
One of the things we've been finding is, you know, our, um, a lot of our service groups, members are dropping and finding it's really useful to combine them, to work together in partnerships. And I really believe that they can keep things moving, using more volunteer as well. Thanks guys. All right, third thing, we have Third Pillar Solar, who we're going to talk about. Community solar projects they're doing. So you know, you can leave it. You need that.
We don't need the phone. No.
Why just move it and stand by the X? Here's the X. And the tall beach. It's left.
Great. And you have a presentation. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, a lot of presentations being pulled up. I'm Matt Harper. I'm the vice president of development at Third Pillar Solar, responsible for our community scale developments across the country.
And I'm Nicole Aykola, I'm involvement manager for this project, and I'm responsible for the near future.
And um, yeah, so we just wanted to come here and share a little bit about this project. We recognize that for most of the places that we go with the floating community solar project, both of those are new concepts for a lot of agencies. So we really just wanted to have this as an informal uh introduction and overview of the company, the technology, and uh what we're looking to do here. So Third Pillar Solar is a relatively small team. We're small but mighty. That you can see the full team on that slide in the picture. We're small, about twenty people. Uh, we've been around since twenty twenty-two and um we uh we all come from different facets of the renewable energy industry and collectively actually now have well over a thousand years of uh combined renewable experience and have been responsible for deploying over five gigawatts of projects across the country from, you know, very large utility scale projects in Texas to small projects in uh this, like, less just to kind of. And Third Pillar is um backed by a uh a global private equity fund called Glensher Capital. They specialize in what they call the energy transition. So um primarily the renewable energy uh companies and technologies like ourselves. And the Glensher team primarily has a background in uh in doing offshore wind, uh, that I think is recognized that the tide is turning, if you will, and that having more distributed local power is uh better for the communities that it serves. So they they invested in us um about two years ago in twenty twenty-three. So we are essentially set up to uh not just develop these projects, but also own and operate them long-term as well. And this is just a quick snapshot of where Third Pillar Solar is active today. Uh, the vast majority of our community-scale projects are concentrated in the Mid-Atlantic and Northeast. So those was highlighted states. Exactly, yeah. And uh and really where the the favorable solar legislation is as well. And then our uh our larger utility scale projects that make up the bulk of those numbers are down in Texas, in Colorado, and not in California. One early project that we like to highlight is it has um some some name brand value. It was uh the project that we're doing at the uh Miller Coors Brewery out in Golden, Colorado. Where you can see there is the the pilot scale deployment that we completed last year. Uh, this will be followed by a much larger uh seven or eight megawatt deployment uh in about two years from now. But this was really a test to prove that this technology can withstand the harsh winters on the Front Range of Colorado, and it has withstood heavy snowfalls and triple-digit wind speeds. So we're moving full s- full speed ahead there.
So we just wanted to take a minute to kind of talk through floating solar and what it is, because it's kind of a seemingly new concept that not too many folks maybe know so much about. And I know uh we hear about solar all the time, but not necessarily electricity on fire. People get a little concerned about something like that. Uh, so I'll just start by highlighting the legend where you can see those items that are highlighted in orange are just typical standard equipment that's used for solar projects. So you have the panels, inverter, transformer, the combiner box, things that we're all familiar with. But the things that are a little different here for the floating portion of this are the mooring lines and the anchoring. So the anchoring is typically a concrete block that either sit at the bottom of the reservoir or it could be bank anchored. So go around the banks of the quarry. We also have the float. So it's actually hook in kind of like Lego pieces. And there's an appendix slide that we have in this uh presentation as well. Let's take a look. But you build these kind of like Lego pieces and you stick the panel onto the float and stack them and space them out as much as we'd like, just depending on the body of water and considerations of that water body. Um, but just to highlight the the anchoring mooring portion, um, mooring is typically done with an elastic mooring um that can handle up to a hundred and fifty mile per hour wind speeds. Um, and so kind of how, and that was talking about our Coors project, that was a really big concern that we had out and follow out of that. We're now testing and making sure that that's a real real thing, that it can really withstand that sort of stuff. But um plastics are typically made with food grade plastic. That's what the uh, that's what the floats are made out of. Um, and the panels themselves are typically made from glass, ninety-nine percent silicone. So there's no leaching, there's no chemicals that can go into the water body. And so now how does this impact the borough of Burnsville and how can you all benefit from this? And so the few different opportunities we have here is the guaranteed bill savings. So this particular project that we're thinking about doing is going to be with New Jersey's BPU's Community Solar Energy Program, uh whereby folks can subscribe, folks that are in JCPN specifically can subscribe to the project and will save up to a thirty percent, it was estimated to be thirty percent discount. Right now, New Jersey BPU is working on uh rolling out their net set of what we believe is going to be a gigawatt or several gigawatts of um capacity for this program. Um, and at that point, they will establish the discount, but we've heard that it's estimated to be about thirty percent for those residents. Um, in addition, just generating local and clean renewable energy to help advance the thorough comprehensive master plan goals. Um, and sorry, additionally, protecting the conservation of local land, so maintaining the integrity of the nature, uh, the nature and the natural land that we have here in the borough of Burnsville. Um, by under, by using a former quarry in Edith Hug, in the town of Long Island, we typically see the traditional solar development. Uh, and lastly, just providing affordable energy. Um, one of the one of the highlights of the community solar program in New Jersey is providing affordable energy specifically for low-income households. So while you can customize your subset of subscribers, that's a big focus and emphasis on providing low-energy for uh for those tips as well.
A few other points I'll add on that slide as well. We understand that there are some affordable housing developments that are are either in construction or planned here, and we'd be very open to figuring out a way to to partner with them to ensure that as many of the subscribers for this project as possible are based here in Burnsville. Um, and uh fifty-one percent of the capacity for the project must be subscribed by low-income um uh low-income subscribers. Um, yeah.
So fifty-one?
Fifty-one percent of their.
And so the last segment we have here for you is is of course the um the quarry that we have in question that we're working through and trying to figure out if, um, yeah, this is a good place for our projects. So um, we've had some initial discussion with JCPN about capacity. So the way this works and the way that solar projects in general, you just have to see if the capacity is there in order to actually develop it. If there's no capacity, then you can't do it. Um, sometimes there's anything actually costs can be quite high, um, and us as the developers, we front that cost. And so um, the costs are in the quadruple millions. We certainly can't afford that. And then the product dies. Um, and then of course, so on, just depending on project economics. And so we received some favorable results from JCPN and that um, the costs are reasonable and they're within the market for uh for making those upgrades in order to interconnect. And actually, on top of a clip here, you can, you can't really see, um, but the substation, so the line that directly connects to the substation that is quite close back. Um, so not too much needs to be done to uh to be able to interconnect here. Um, and this is of course a very preliminary layout of what it might look like. And of course, it wouldn't just be this black square that we've drawn on top of this water body, it will look much nicer than this. Um, but it kind of shows you that you have like the the um floating equipment that goes on the water and then onshore equipment that will come on the side of the quarry and and then just connect and have a point of interconnection on the pole line that goes along the road there, um, just after Rip Rath Road.
So the people that own the quarry, yeah, she would, you have a contract with them and lease it?
That's right. We have a long-term lease in place with them for uh for that that space on the water.
And do they get any of those savings?
They can also opt-in, anyone with a JCPN account can opt-in to subscribe to the project, and we expect that a number of them will. Um, you know, there's a few that are very strongly supportive of this. Uh, it's an owners association, so there's quite a few folks back there. Um, but and then there will also be long-term lease revenue associated.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. You're interesting. Um. The Third Pillar will continue to own the facility. That means right, you own and operate it, and you have to guarantee you with JCPN, they're actually by electricity, and you're there to do this. That's basically the economics.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay.
And so it was it was the JCPN policy that's suggesting fifty-one percent of that opt-in?
That's actually a DPU policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's from the state level um community solar program. Then those rights were handed down in the initial lease agreement.
Um, there any impact, seasonal impact to it, like change in light or weather storms or?
It certainly produces a lot less power.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's comes with the territory here, but there's no concerns about snow or ice, at least in terms of the amount that you would see.
Or damaging it.
Yeah.
I don't think they pour it, but it freezes. I don't worry about that.
But why?
It is quite deep.
It's so deep.
Why that specific location? Is it just the size of it, given the um conception, the art conception right there, or is it elevation? I'm just interested in why that's a good.
Yeah, that's a really great question. It has more to do with the grid infrastructure around there. And you think that it's a a very hard place to build other solar projects. There hasn't been, you know, you're actually not allowed to build a ground launching solar project anymore as part of the New Jersey Community Solar Program. Uh, but for the first few years that it was running, that that was the case, and there's a lot of pressure from, you know, on uh using ag land. And so given the uh the location there and the grid capacity, that's really what what we identified. And the fact that it is an industrial site that, you know, doesn't have any view shade concerns, doesn't have any recreational needs, no public access, it really checked all the boxes of exactly the type of water body that we look for when we go try to find these water bodies across the country.
We just want to put this stuff in the right places, right?
Yeah, that's kind of.
Final question, sorry. There are other um communities locally that have a similar project, I guess, but I saw one.
Yes, so the Borough Sayerville was first to uh to deploy floating solar in New Jersey. That was back in two thousand and seventeen, I'd say. That project's been there for a while. That's actually in a drinking water reservoir and is uh powering the onsite treatment plant. And then a few years later, New Jersey American Water uh put out an RFP for a project, a new reservoir in Millburn. Uh, that's actually the largest community, sorry, the largest floating solar project in the country. It's also not a community solar project. And this, that's also powering their onsite treatment plant for their their drinking water.
Thank you.
You know, so.
Anyone else? Yeah. Well, thank you for the.
I guess what's the next step? You guys are still doing your assessment analysis to see if it is financially feasible. What's the timing on that?
It's a great question. So the the next, with the preliminary results that we've recently received from JCPN, uh, we believe the project will be financially feasible. And now we're going to conduct some basic surveys to understand, you know, what's there in terms of weapon resources or other concerns for NJDEP. And then we will kick off the permitting process with the uh the Borough's Plan Board likely in February or March time, presumably, I guess.
Yeah.
Good. We have Tina online.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Sorry, I'm not there in person, but I appreciate the overview. I just wanted to ask about the risks and downsides of putting in a solar project like this that you guys have encountered in the past for communities.
That's a good question. Um, every water body is so different that um it's it's hard to generalize in terms of risks. But often the the risks that come up are around the location of these within either floodplains or areas that have um a lot of natural resources associated with the water body. So there'd be, there are questions that come up about the coverage go and whether um you're going to cover enough that it would degrade the natural environment that's there. I think, you know, wh- what we've looked at from preliminary data, and again, we're in very early stages of this, we don't see those concerns with this set. Are there others that you can figure out?
I would say like, um, something that we're encountering is just a lot of these solar developers often don't engage the community in terms of fire departments or folks that should be involved in this sort of development. And so what we're doing at a project that we have permitted um in in Upstate New York is working with the local fire department, working with people locally so that they know um how to just how to manage these, um, not just to be left there. So a lot of the concerns just comes from local engagement. And so we're trying our best to kind of come and explain these things to you and create programs for other folks locally so that they feel supported to you um in terms of the maintenance and operation after it's done.
And the maintenance is what you you do, you take care of. There are certain schedule of.
There is, absolutely. And we want a subcontractor who's based here locally who can respond more quickly than than you can as a national company. Um, there will be, I think, biannual scheduled maintenance checks that are mostly focused on the anchoring and mooring system, because we have a lot of uh data that we don't need to do a physical maintenance check on in terms of how the panels are actually operating. And then the other thing we monitor closely is extreme weather. So, you know, in the unlikely event that a a major storm rolls through, we would have alerts set up to go out and do an ad hoc inspection after but, you know, a hurricane or some other type of major winter storm event.
But then just because you mentioned the major event, are there any responses to this in the borough?
Absolutely. No, no, not at all. So we couldn't do it.
Thank you.
Is it possible to see um the energy? You know, I think um when I worked in Chester, we had a a ground display and we could log on and see um how, you know, we'd see the energy being coming in. And it was great for the kids, learn about how these things work. And I don't know if that's, you know, something that you could do for the public.
That is definitely something we could look into. Open sourcing the generation data off the books. Absolutely. Yeah, as I referenced, we will have all of that data. And I think it's just about setting up a simple platform. Maybe people can log in and see how many kilowatt hours is.
Be a great educational tool.
Yeah, I love that.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Thank you. Just thank you for taking the time to uh kind of explain this to you. See you again in the future.
Yeah, I know. If there's any more questions or any residents or folks have any concerns, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. We have minutes to approve from October twentieth and twenty seventh. Anybody? Motion.
Okay, ready to dance? Also?
All in favor?
Hi.
We now have our first open session for a item seven office in public hearing. So again, remember and stand on the solar next. Anthony will do the present.
Hi. Hi. So uh I'm Grant Daily in the library again. Uh the uh our one page here about what's going on at the library is just going to be, and so I shared in the past with you. The news is that we're in our meeting last Tuesday, we approved our draft budget. And we must do start discussing that when you enable and we are in the winter reorganization. Um and we had some really great numbers, especially since the renovation, we examined this post renovation to the end of October and our children's circulation was up ten percent, our attendance is up four percent. Then we moved over like back codes and also now community. So I know that was like a really awkward time with low numbers. Um but they rebounded tremendously and things are going. If you guys have any questions for me about um what's coming up and what we're doing and um our numbers so far, they're just for through October. Our graph of attendance is going really well. That's just through the end of last year. And this year I'm anticipating hopefully we can knock up a hundred thousand visitors, but I think there are going to be a man that would. You're at like eighty-four.
And you're now open every night, right?
Yeah, we're open Monday through Thursday, um through nine P M.
Right.
Um you only open until five P M previously on Thursday and eight P M Wednesday. And now with that extra time in, we're seeing a lot of tool use because it's after their sports practices, so we projects, they really like the big dry erase boards to do math because they're doing it on a chrome book. And they're not using paper and spreading out all sorts of fabulous solar growl off. It's beautiful. And if they're made for love, it's like every space on, you know, Tuesday through Thursday has been really busy.
I didn't, I'm excited to see that. I didn't realize that you guys, there's scanner printer coppers. So I'm going like, I'm at the library like three to four days a week. And going to like more sound, I think you all want to stop. So that's awesome.
Sorry.
Now, I tried, I didn't think to check.
We, um, a few years ago consolidated into one big printer and we lease it so that we don't have to pay for any fluctuations. So the standing script.
That's awesome.
What if they're planning to get a hundred thousand?
Well, uh maybe next year, open seven days till nine P M. Really, they have a standard public view for the library that is sent forward from Library Journal that you guys have at some time in the late night. They're really nice. But I I think that our beautiful new space. I I won't be better.
Yeah, I will say the first experience, like if you don't get there early, those little kiosks in the back are like, they fill up.
Yeah.
Like they're they're packed. Like a ton of people are using those. It's like those little little offices.
They definitely just. Being as updated.
Bob Graham, eighty-four year old student, garden, no burn itself. Um couple of things. Uh first one, no problem. I sent you a background here on solar. No uh issues, concerns, it's a background here, up to understand the projects and the technology and so forth. So enjoy that. Should be complimentary to their presentation. Uh second thing is the the uh Clermont stop signs that mine not get divided intersection. I just want to be sure, um someone is there finding the mapping services. That stop signs are going to be there. And they need normal, maybe they do it, but please have someone really check that when a stop sign goes there, the mapping services know it's there. Um the other thing is just think about whether what kind of stop sign, you know, should it have little lights on it? You know, I don't know if it's legal. Something that makes it stand out or they may have a sign that that uh says uh stop sign ahead or something. But I, once again, I don't know what they're doing, but we want to make sure people don't run it.
I know one of the, when they added this stop sign, it become down Clermont, that they entered to the mend of road. They had for a long time in a new traffic pattern, watch a new traffic pattern.
That could be an important thing. But the mapping service is important, especially with full full automatic drive. And then uh the third thing is I sent you two emails, a primary and a follow up on the dam. And I want to be sure that you are asking, I guess, our engineers, you know, your engineers to uh thoroughly cost out the piano key wear option since it's in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand to do the dam remediation. Um it's really important. Um and it is kind of what you guys were asking for. Is there something that could avoid these multimillion dollar uh initiatives? Uh there is. And the industry standard for mediating this dam is to use a piano key wear. Um it may need additional supports because to balance it and so forth, but that is the default standard. So engineers need to start with that. And then if they can't first, they need to explain to you why they can't use the industry standard to remediate that dam. Which is this weird uh they're kind of funny name, so but they're they're basically I think what people need to understand is a little bit of the hydro, the hydro technology, which is the amount of water that can pass over the dam is a function of the correct of the dam, which is sixty feet. But if you take a hundred and twenty feet and you compress it into an accordion into sixty feet, it has that hundred and twenty feet of uh it has twice the capacity. So a piano key is even better than that. So it is the engineering standard. And you need to go back, look at what's being added to you for damage safety, which is just the uh maximum flood. And the correct answer for that is you install a piano key wear. It's only if they cannot do that for some reason, they may come up with that you would consider any other alternative. So please follow up on that because it's a lot of money and I kind of like to keep the lake, you know, I don't think keep the damn of the lake and so forth. So I gave you all the details, rough estimates on the financials. You can inflate it by in a New Jersey, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
We have to do that. Thank you, Bob. Uh anybody um up there? Was a question?
Yeah.
Nope. Okay, I think anybody else? We're good. I will close the public session. Uh moving on to ordinances, I will.
That ordinance is something I uh I did this period.
So I'll open the public here on ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty-third, authorizing twenty twenty-six salaries age ranges, the number of charred employees of the Borough of Burnsville. Would anyone like to be heard on this ordinance?
Just had a question. Um we try to narrow the borough's cost of living distance. So it's a percentage you're working with. We'd like to know.
Yeah, we're we're not there yet. And this is really just sending. Yes. Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, we will, we will keep you in the. Um seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Sure.
Yeah.
I move this passport ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty thirty to final reading and adopt as published. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. McRae?
Yes.
Mr. Agaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Dazarena?
Yes.
I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-one, appropriating the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for replacement in an SPR blower for the solar plant in general applicable items. Would anyone like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I need to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty thirty-one, final read and adopt as published. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dazarena?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Agaro?
Yes.
Ms. McRae?
Yes.
There it goes. Okay, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-two, any one being sergeant position in the police department and amending chapter two of the Borough Code entitled Administration. Would anyone like to be heard on this? And this was a recommendation from the chief. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I decided I got to move this one.
Yeah.
I moved the passport ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty thirty-two, final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. McRae?
Yes.
Ruth, um beside of Agaro?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Dazarena?
Yes.
We are now introducing ordinances. Um definitely there.
Twenty-five dash twenty thirty-three, appropriating the sum of two hundred thousand dollars for connection of the W W T P to the NJ American Water main. Introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law and a public hearing be scheduled for meeting beginning at seven P M Monday, December fifteenth. Wait a second.
All right, comments, questions, any fun? I think we uh we talked about it last week, so um all in favor?
All right, all right.
I.
Oppose.
I move that ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty forty-four, establishing a five-way stop intersection at Clermont Road slash mine mount roads slash senior drive intersection and supplementing and amending chapter seven of the Borough Code entitled Crafted. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I.
It's still.
I have a delay from my side, sorry.
Um yeah, we can just, when we get to this, um I think, as I mentioned about, there is a crosswalk missing there.
I think I think they're responsible.
Yeah, we can have the five crosswalks and I'd love to have, you know, the blankies if we could have this on the stop sign. So just to. Anyway. You want to move it in some months?
Right. Let's see. I move that ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty thirty-five, replacing the borough's special event ordinance and amending chapter four of the Borough Code entitled General Licensing. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law and a public hearing be scheduled for the meeting beginning at seven P M Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Right. You have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Oppose. And thank you, Jack, for your work on this. And we we made you go back and forth a couple of times. And we'll probably be going back and forth a few. Yeah, but um and I think, you know, if we'll approve this, that at some point we notify all the local groups that this is in place, just so they're aware.
Yep.
All right, moving on to resolutions. We have twenty-five to eleven through twenty-five, two through seven. Anyone to pull out separately between the logis are pretty standard.
Just to remind, two thirteen, that's the farmer's market and Main Street. If the uh work in this.
Um yeah, it was.
Our progress to Major's.
Just those two things. When is the holiday? The oh, you got a flyer. Six to six to nine, it should be. Uh I said, yeah, it's not six to eight, not and take fifteen minutes, but right now that.
That differ from the lighting?
Yes, the lighting is at four same day and then it is at six.
Yeah.
Yeah, time to be both. Great, um.
I mean, the resolutions twenty-five dash two one one to twenty-five dash two twenty-seven.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dazarena?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
You need?
Yeah.
Mr. Agaro?
Yes.
Read.
Yes.
All right, um mayor's update. Uh so everyone's stuck there. Um I attended a a session that the business partners get posted called powering tourism with local theme sites. Um basically, the county logo and tagline will be where history comes alive. And um shop, dine, stay in Somerset County. All the towns in Somerset County have signed on to Rev NJ, which is the two fiftieth celebration, which not a lot of other counties can pay credit for. Uh the other thing they talked about, the county has purchased a program called City Data, which will um allow us to track how many people come in and out of town on certain occasions, events. Uh we were thinking it would be great for like the farmer's market to know where they where they come from, how long they stay and where they go and they leave. Um right now, the county has it, so we can't access it, but we can test them. So if we give them a list of events, there's a special thing at the library. Um if we have the holiday parade, we do different events during the year. We let them know when they are and they will then be able to track us and give us that data. So I think it's they were hoping within a year that we will all have our own sign ons and look it up ourselves, but for now we have to ask them, but it's kind of like laser AI, which at some point we will be looking to purchase and it's very expensive. So this is nice that the county bought it and we get access to it. Um I did a ribbon pedal. We have a new uh forever young in Broadway Suites on Clermont. Um I had a lead lunch and learn on the lamed up legislation. A lot of it is pretty scary. As you recall, we did the resolution last week for the one about the religious and nonprofits being able to do an inclusionary development with a pilot and don't have to pay attention to our zoning laws. They can go extra stories, uh forty units per acre. So we have opposed that one. There is legislation about allowing ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. Um there was another one to reduce parking requirements within a half mile of the train station. Uh another one that we kind of like this one prohibits warehouses near historic districts. But there was, there's been quite a few. Um there's also one on stranded properties, which I don't think applies to us, but if you know how many little strip walls that are kind of empty and sitting there that um they can be converted to mixed use if there are thousands of square. Empty and sitting there, that, um, that it can be converted to mixed use if they're fifty thousand square, even more.
Yeah, this question.
Yeah.
Do you know when the lame duck session actually occurred, I think?
It's now till December, really.
Now till December, yeah, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, so it could be anytime.
Yeah. And I know, uh. To, to, you know, opposing it, especially to one of the nonprofits and religious organizations, I've seen a lot of articles in the paper. But town is all passing that resolution, I know the, the league is lobbying against it, the conference of mayors is lobbying against it, but. We'll see where it goes. Um, yeah, I had two weddings this month, it's a busy month for weddings, and, um, we did the, uh, Ricky, were there the tree dedication for Tony Hajar? Out in front, which was lovely, this family has a wife who's here, and. We have a nice little marker for it. Um. I went to the Celebration of Life for former mayor Jim Williams. And also the way for Nat Conti, Nat, Nat Conti was another. Amazing citizen that we had for many years, who did a lot of good work for this community. Uh, Nancy and I had a meeting with the Highlands, um. Folks about our application to. Join, we're now in the process of the center designation, which will be, as soon as the draft is approved, we will share with everyone, so you can all see. Uh, what Jessica has come up with in terms of what we're calling the center. That is the developable area, and then what's outside that is, is. Preserve for, um, water and open space. I think she said, yeah, we were gonna do that, um, they're gonna do public outreach in March and April on that, once the council, when everybody signs along with it. We had, Main Street had a mixer at the burning, um, I hope you were there, Charlie, you were there, right? And then the next night, the county, the, uh, business partnership had a mixer at the burning. Yeah. Uh, I was at the, the, uh, League of Municipal Police Conference. This past week, and I, um. Moderated a panel on the semi-Quinn Centennial. Otherwise, it was the two fiftieth. Um. Yeah, so Rev New Jersey, if you want it, it's revnewjersey.org, if you want to look up what's going on statewide. Um, they are having. A potluck. America's potluck on July fifth, and encouraging towns to all do this on that same day. To just have a gathering, people bring cultural foods and whatever, so that is one thing, they, and they also are. Asking everyone to have a reading of the Declaration of Independence on July eighth. They do have a traveling exhibit that we can borrow, if we have a place to put it, like maybe the library. Uh, then we can borrow up to two weeks, you know, they've got some great panels that set up, um. There was another one of the panelists is, her goal is to reach Generation Z. Because they are not really interested much in history, so to get them involved in the two fiftieth. Um, it's called Made by Us. One of their great ideas that they're doing is creating a wish wall. So you put up somewhere, whether it's Starbucks, or the library, or Borough Hall, where people put post its up, of. What's your wish for America's future? Which are those kind of cheap ideas, so just some ideas we can steal. The other, uh, one of the other programs I sat in on, those of you that know Chris Otto, I think he was on the planning board briefly, his. Company, um. Are, I don't know what you described them as, but they do trends and market trends, and. It's, uh, so Jeff Otto was kind of depressing, actually.
Yeah.
But I'll share some of those facts, seventy two percent of households in New Jersey are childless.
Seventy two, seventy.
Seventy two percent. Well, of course, I think you know this, the fifty five plus age group is growing. Said there's of fifty thousand to a hundred thousand of people, residents, leave New Jersey every year. We are the highest. Of any of the states in New Jersey of people leaving. Of eighteen to thirty four year olds, fifty percent plan on leaving New Jersey within ten year. And forty three is the average age of a first time homeowner in Jersey. Just thought those were really interesting, I know. Yeah. So, just on that issue. Yeah. Um, just one last thing, we're doing Reeds Across America again, at St. Bernard Cemetery, where. Uh, it's a, it's actually international, uh, started with a company in Vermont who had extra wreaths. And decided to put them on as veterans' graves, and now it's an international. Day when all over the country we do this, so our one cemetery, St. Bernard's, uh, does it every year. Sometime I'm in charge of that. So, um. If you're interested in being there, we do a ceremony at two o'clock, and then we have the Boy Scouts and whatever, and we go out and put wreaths on the graves of our veterans. Um. It is the thirteenth at two P M, and you can sponsor a wreath for seventeen dollars. Uh, I think I posted it on, it's on Facebook, so if you want to look up to where they, I think I sent you all invitation anyway. We're about thirty wreaths per of. Our goal, so, um. The thirtieth is the last day to order wreaths, but. They love it, really great picture, doing it will be great.
It's easier to offer, but, yeah.
This is actually our fifth year of doing that, so, um. It started with St. East, it had that, the traveling. Um. You know, they bring the big truck and you can walk through it, and St. East had that, and somehow we got involved and. Yeah, we're doing it, but it's, it's, the veterans come, the scouts come, I think it's really nice. It's cold, but we do it quickly. And that's why we're here. Nancy, sorry.
Um, my word is basically, we heard it last week, it was to update. Everybody on a couple of very different water projects. Um, the water main extension out front, and we're gonna provide water to the sewer plant and to the portable housing, um. How much across the street is complete? Uh, that took place, um, at night, from reports of. I think seven, or, uh, working days. Um. You passed. Or you introduced the ordinance, I think, for two hundred thousand dollars, that hopefully is well more than what we need, but that is to connect. Our sewer plant to all of the. Uh, to the extent of the budget for that. Um. New Jersey American Water, uh, had already, who lives in the Boyland, you can pivot, is very, did a lot of work on the water main there. Um, increasing the size of it, and it's a one inch, it's a double project. Um. Nation has to be complete, so New Jersey American Water needs to go under the railroad tracks. Um, and. Uh, come out on Route two oh two, exit the right by, um, the valet of the Burnerton. Um. That is a project that will take probably a month and a half. Uh. It will not start until January fifth, January fifth, so that we, um. Do not disturb the vendor, the holidays, or the downtown shopping. Um, because there will be quite a few gods in the train station that were held. Um, there will be a big pit that they have to, um, dig there, there will be a big, a big pit of Boyland parents. That we will completely eat. Um, wouldn't you be, yeah. Not one of the trains.
I'm so surprised it's in the north, but, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Fully on it.
Part of, part of the project, uh, that at some point will be, probably for our, for drilling. Um. And all the residents and businesses in the area will be. But anyway, um, with the mayor's tab, we will put that on, but then.
And if they wanted to do it in December, no.
I take that away.
Yeah, it's gonna take away twenty of its spots during December. Um.
Okay, so, the second project is. Um. I guess this, the third, this is not New Jersey American Water, and this doesn't happen in the summer, but portions of our rural decaying in County. Uh, that's gonna take place over four nights. Again, in the summer, um, based on what we said last week, I did email that, and then we'll put it in sidewalk. Um, I haven't got a response to that, you know. So I'll let you know like that. And then we have our side one, a project that should take place in the Boyland neighborhood. At some point next, uh, year after New Jersey American Water. Um. And then I did want to update you, we did talk last week about the work. That we're gonna do on the pole grounds, um. To put the ballerads up, so that people aren't driving, uh, on that area by the surf field, uh, there's concern. Um, about angle on taxes, so we moved. The. Location where the ballerads will be, so that the driver that goes directly to the field where these angles, and it's gonna be able to cover the park area. Will we move? Okay, the ballerads will be active at one.
That's a good idea.
So, there, being on.
That's good.
You know, what they mean, sir, about when they were doing on that area, they were skipping a piece in the middle?
Um, I didn't get any answer on that.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Well, it was just, yeah, still waiting, yeah, well, Tom Bozino was retiring, I think he's already, may already be gone. So they're in the middle of changing engineers and playing everything, so.
But Matt, uh, Matt Miller is still there, um, so. Hopefully he will respond, I think they probably paid that expense, but we're calling it a daddy.
Exactly. No. That's a two, shit, and that.
That's all.
All right, thank you, um. You have a motion to accept the department open reports.
I move to accept it, of course, also.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed. Um, I don't think we have any open force, I think, other than Bob's letter. Um, unfinished business, I did want to talk about the, uh, civilian policy. Um, Nancy had sent us all something she wanted to add to the. Employee handbook. And I don't think you got any feedback on that. So I don't know if people remember what you said, but. It's good?
Yeah.
So we can do that first, and then go back to the ring bits of the, and I think we just had an incident this week of. Someone being abusive.
Yes. Yeah, there, they have, unfortunately, more often. You would think, um, and it's a chance.
Yeah, so let's, we'll get the policy done first, I mean, yeah, the handbook, and then we'll. Policy for.
We get to like, hook like, have like a bullet point version of it, that we can like post. Yeah, like, there are people like interact mostly with, you know, employees, like just sitting right there, sort of pointing to it. Hard to miss our expectations, yeah.
So the, uh, we got back to me today, we found out, so I'll make sure that we get a summary of the changes. And, uh, they came it up, and then in December, with the, uh, the jet. Right?
Okay, very. Uh, is there unfinished business? Anything business? All right, we have another open session, if anyone feels the need.
Dr. Dr. George Schultz, says we're refusing, was he? Bob Graham, maybe for that, who brought it around? Um, the first question I had was for Nancy, um. Do we think the county might also be paying a investment in ridge, and they just haven't talked?
A man.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so they'll be kind of around, there'll be multiple networks, not just.
Organized.
And there'll be others, when they're doing, you know, extension.
For the number, yeah.
Right, we share, it's good. Um, the second thing is, we, there was a construct with suggestion that, okay, for Main Street, that the street. Might be closed. Uh, that maybe two or two would be closed for, uh, for something, for some, one of the events you were gonna.
What? It's great, but that's. Fifteen minutes.
It's just fifteen minutes, okay.
But they are. It's September, the street fair.
The street fair, okay, then, problem with that.
Yeah, it kind of.
Do you know how they would wrap the traffic?
It's, well, it would only be between Claremont and the center of town, so then you could go off Claremont and around or the other way.
So on Claremont. Traveling north would go up Claremont and over Mill, right?
Right.
And then through the intersection, like. What about coming south onto, to?
South, you'd have to go to Mine Mount.
It goes over Mine Mount?
Yeah.
Just was wondering, thanks, that's.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, do I have a motion for closed session?
All of the.
Executives.
The judge of execution, second.
Or contract negotiations impending litigation, we will not be coming back out?
We've not, not.
Okay, so, and it's really only eight oh six. Somebody with a ladder needs to. We're gonna keep looking at them.
Charlie.
Charlie, it's, yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Then we'll just stay.
To perform the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot, I can stand on this door, but we have to wear it from.
You need anything for that?
Nope.
You're good.
Just need a cookie.
Okay.